If I agree to figure out what was best for you and make those educated decisions rather than backtrack. So with that, I was gonna take any questions you get in my hand.
How do you then interface with your architect? How does this work?
So you go through the process and you interview and select it. Say you select White Hand. Then, I mentioned this earlier, they're the checks and balance. So we work as a team, but we check them on design and they check us on the materials that are put in, the quality and the installation. And we have our own processes for that, but again, they're the second set of people that come in and make sure that what they've designed was put in correctly. And then during design, one of the big things that we offer is that cost feedback. So, cost feedback. So you give us, architects are really good at designing everything. I'll say this with Greg sitting right next to me, but they aren't responsible for cost down the road when it comes down to receiving bids at construction managers. So the construction manager needs to be accountable upfront to tell the architect what those different things cost. And tell you as well. So if there's a design feature that adds value, what our job is, is to make sure that we tell you what that cost is. So you internally can evaluate what's the best solution. Is it to, you know, use a certain mechanical system that might have a shorter life, but it gets you that product, it gets underneath the budget? Or do we go with a different system that has a longer life, but it's a more costly component of the original bid, but it pays for itself over time? Those are the things that we work hand in hand on to give you, again, opportunity to review where that number should fall. Because I know it's not an unlimited budget, never is.
Do you have anything to add to what you were saying as our architect? Do you see any problems with...
No, I mean, we, like I said, we've worked with, you know, under the CMC method many times, and it's, and it works. And White Hand is a, you know, a good friend of the office and we do, you know, great work together. And in the working hand in hand, that's exactly what you gotta do. You know, we kind of pushed at one time and tried to get the CM on board early, you know, early on. And that's really the reason why, try to, try to work hand in hand budgets.
Yeah, I would like, these two guys probably don't really understand, but I'll go over it a little further. Review this TMC for me.
The CMC, the CM at risk?
Uh-huh.
This, CMC?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no problem. So, so just kind of go through the process of how we go from point A to point B?
Yeah.
Okay. So you go through and you put an RFP out and state, and I have a little handout here I can give you on those requirements that the state makes you send out, returning the RFP. Whether you, you're not beholden to interviews, but you can interview and then you make that selection. So then we jump in, say we're selected, we jump in day one, we meet with Elavadas, with Greg and his team, and we go through to get caught up onto the job on what conversations have been helped at this point and the why behind it. So then we immediately put a budget together. And then we would come back and review that budget with you. Whether there's alternates in there, whether there's design opportunities, whatever the case may be, but we have to put that number together so we know what we're working with. Whether that's above what you want to spend, below what you want to spend, whatever. But our pre-con team would do that. Then we would go out, you guys would, you would be part of the public bid. All packages would be publicly bid, even ones that we self-perform you have to publicly bid, which I think is one of the benefits of the law. It allows you to see, you know, everybody, we break into the packages. Here's what I think is important too, is that we break it into packages where we think we're spending their money wisely, where we're buying construction the right way. Because a lot of people, I, there was a bid just a couple of weeks ago, Donna Jefferson County, and they did it with four packages. They did a site work and electrical, mechanical and general construction. So we weren't part of that project. It's down in Jefferson County, down by Lovable. So that's a little bit further than our range, so we weren't part of that. But one of the negatives of that is you have markup on top of markup on top of markup, right? So we want to minimize where you're having double or triple markup. So we're gonna have a roofing package and we're gonna try to break it into components that make sense, that you don't have the double and triple markup on. You just have that contractor doing their overhead profit and calling it good. The other benefit to that is we're gonna look for opportunities and use local folks. And whether that's big or small, so there might be somebody, and we're friendly with Epicat. Chad's a friend of ours, he's been, as many emails as I've gotten from Don on newspaper clippings on the process that you guys have been going through, I've got just as many phone calls or email clippings from Chad. So he's, you know, he's probably, it's probably a bad example, but we want to make sure that we entice him as a local contractor to bid this project. And in doing that, we don't want to lump a bunch of stuff in his bid package that he doesn't, you know, he has to take sell bids himself. That doesn't make a lot of sense. And then he's gonna have to mark that up, he's gonna have to manage it, and he's gonna, we're gonna have to hold his money longer because the earthworks are front and not in. So those are things that you just, you look to put together a strategy and then we present that strategy to you to make sure it aligns with the commitments you've made as a team. So that's one of the things. And then we go into construction. So we, let's say we receive bids, bids have come in according to, you know, the plan. We get the ball rolling as quickly as possible. We have somebody like Don, hopefully it is Don, on-site, forty hours a week managing your project, managing your risks. Because at the end of the day, that's what you're paying us for. When, when you come to the site, when anybody comes to the site, they're gonna go right to Don. And the benefit to that is if anything happens, if there's ever anything that goes, that doesn't go according to plan, you know right where you're going, you're going to Don. So that, we run through the process of that. We would then start construction. We go through construction, but give them monthly updates, ADP such as this. And then we get to the end and we manage all your warranty for it, whatever that warranty is. And there's a couple of strategies to that as well. You've got a high-use facility, standard warranties one year. Is there an opportunity to look at getting a two-year warranty and not paying for it? Because you're doing it in a competitive, whenever you go above two years, you're gonna pay for it. Because then, you know, your people will have to weigh their risk. But there might be opportunities to get some of that taken care of in the bidding process and get a little bit more for the balance. And then we would do walkthroughs of eleven months. Say it's a one-year warranty, we do walkthrough of eleven months, eleven months with you. We'd make sure that everything's, but that gives us a month. If a mechanical unit's not working as planned, or something's not working, and the sheriff has a concern about this or that, it gets fixed. And it gets fixed within that warranty period. I think that's one of the negatives, is that people wait till the end and then they come back and go, you had a one-year warranty that was broke, you know, a year ago, and then they go, well, it's a year and a half later. So we want to document that, we want to put everything down and ensure that we manage that process. Because that's one of the few, you know, your last steps of getting that work underneath that contractual line, but also contract. We hold all the subcontractors, or subcontractors too. So that guaranteed maximum price that's established when you sell bonds, it's, we have all of it. And I, there's value in that. Again, we work under all of them and there's benefits to each of the delivered methods. But the great thing there is you have a single source of responsibility for cost and quality. And it's right here.
So we had a joint meeting and they gave us a number.
Yeah.
So our next step is to find somebody. Is that my assumption? Is that right Ted?
You've got to choose how you're gonna go.
Well, they already told us it's gonna be at risk.
Okay. Then you do the RFP. And so there's proposals from companies to do that. And then decide how you, how you're gonna choose one.
So is that what we're gonna do today, is have Ted put that up there?
You put out the RFP.
The county puts out the RFP.
Now, do we have to bid that out?
You have to, you have to request proposals and what you, and your request identifies what factors you're gonna consider. You don't have to do the interviews, you can do the interviews. And it's not, it is not quantity based. It's not lowest and best bidder. It's qualifications and so forth. What you pick on then, then you get a contract. Do that to them.
So that's our next step?
Yeah. Is to do the RFP. If the council said they won't fund it without CMC, then that's what you do next.
That's what they thought. I think that's what we need to do, you know, move the... Because if we keep putting back... It's already cost us way a lot more than what we should've. So do we need a motion on that?
Motion to advertise, request for proposals for construction management services advertised.
Well, I think my motion. So we need to, how to say?
It has to be advertised because it's not, I mean, the construction manager is doing the contract.
Correct.
So that's, that's the difference between this and...
So it's an RF?
Then the other method.
What's it called, an RF, what?
RFP.
RFP in question. Request for proposal for, yeah.
So you made that motion?
Yes.
Matt, can you bring me back to our motion?
No, that's my mask. I didn't read it.
Your question, I'll help you out here. Yeah, sorry, that's the one that kind of explains the law.
Right. So I need to, for a CMC total project bid, you need to request bids?
Proposals.
Proposals.
So motion to request proposals?
Correct. For a CMC?
You can even put the IC in your notes and then pick that up in that paper. It's got an IC.
IC, IC five dash thirty-two?
Yeah.
Dash one.
Five is thirty-two.
And it, and it will go through, I'm sorry.
Well, that's where you're gonna say that.
Right on.
You can, it's fine, I'll get it.
Right underneath, nope, it's five dash three-two. That is the general statement statute.
I thought we would pass this part already.
We're sorry. We have been asked to sort of redo it. Are you comfortable with that, for a second?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. But I don't know that I can repeat the motion.
Motion to request proposals for a CMC and an IC code. Is that good enough?
I have four new... If you're comfortable with that motion, you can. I call for a vote. If you're in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye. So how long do we have to accept bids? Does that gotta be something?
I think it should once, I think. I think you gotta publish twice. But it usually is a three-week period, once you have these go off that we return them. And that gives you, they have the time to...
I don't have that.
I think it has to be published twice, is that right? I believe so.
So we're looking at June to pick someone?
Probably.
Did they come to you?
Oh, they come to you a couple of us.
They have proposals.
You're gonna get proposals. And then on the outside, you're gonna do proposals.
And you're gonna write it, right Ted?
I'll write the notice.
Does it say that they must have so many copies of it or any of that in them?
Uh, we can put that in there, yes.
We can usually get our copies and then our digital, like a digital copy for distribution.
Anything else we need to cover or talk about?
So when I do...
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, one last thing for offset play is that you get to pick the best team. You know, the number's the number and that sets the baseline, but you don't have to pick the best numbers. You can pick the best team based on the resources they put together. So that's one of those. Thank you for your talk, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anything that we can ask?
I was just going to offer, offer you guys and Ted a, just our RFP that we sent out for Fulton County, just as a reference. If you want to review that, just questions and...
Yeah. You want to say something if you wanted to.
How are you able to talk to people?
Yeah, we are down to other commissioner acts, actions. Leader of Acceptance of Pricing for Race Man. I have it in here.
Is there where he made a motion?
Yeah.
To accept and tell me if you've signed it. Why they're signing Ted, the noise ordinance for the jackbreaks?
Yes.
What did we, I know you sent me all that stuff to me.
Yeah. I didn't bring it with me.
Okay. I know we can put it on the...
It has to be done with a, as a noise.
Noise.
And it doesn't necessarily specify a jackbreak. And it has to be something that mechanically or electronically measured and so forth.
Well, the problem will be is enforcement.
Right.
But signs, I mean, the...
Signs.
Right.
That's signs.
The state said they won't do it because they won't take the, you know, it's a safety system on a truck. But the trucks are doing it just to, just to be doing it. And residents out there, four twenty-one eighteen, are kind of tired of it.
Right.
But I don't know how many enforcement.
I didn't know what roads you were talking about. And they're the state highway.
It's state.
They, they won't allow unless it's in this form.
And they still won't do it, really?
Well, no, they won't do it. It's the county's responsibility to enforce.
I mean, I'm just saying the state won't put the signs up either.
No. You would have to do it at the entrance to the county. And I don't know how, how, how many times you have to repeat it. If you're on, if you're talking about state highways, I didn't ask you that question. I assumed that you wouldn't do it.
Well, the guy's called them like three or four times, you know, he wants to know where we're at with it.
I would send him all that stuff that they sent to us.
He's got all of that. He's done his stuff, he just wants to know what we're gonna do for them.
We have to, the state highway, we cannot do anything our own. But we, we would be ones that have to enforce it and we have to have the equipment to detect it. It's like, you have to have somebody out there to measure this. Measure.
Well, we can just lift the boat up there, put it in the hand. Yeah, I'll get that six.
Are we, we're agreeing again.
And we're right at the bottom?
Okay. We've got something we want to move forward, the salt farm. The state wants us to re-sign the deed, not because we made any mistakes on it, is it because, I don't know what it was, Paul was on there.
I think it says in the...
So, you've already approved signing this deed. They, they have you sign the deed, even though the state signs the deed, they have you sign the deed because you're accepting the condition that it probably has is, that's why they have you do it. It's not normal that the grantee signs the deed. So the state signs the deed, they want, they require the local officials to sign the deed thirty-four thousand dollars. So you've already approved this in the previous meeting and you've already signed the deed. So I don't think you need to authorize, I think you just need your signature on that. So if you want to do that, we can get it back to Department of Transportation so we can get that. So I don't even know if, I think that was the, notice about the salt farm? I do.
You do?
I do.
Okay.
But I think that was one of the reasons, because Paul's on there.
Oh, Paul's name was on there?
I believe so, I'm not really...
Okay. So, no, no motion is necessary. So if you want to sign this now or you want to sign this after the meeting, we're sorry. Okay. We have somebody that can notarize it from your office. Will they notarize it without the person present? Some people won't do that anymore.
Well, just the commissioner.
Right.
Myself.
Sign just as your name is printed, they're in a separate page for each of you. There's more than one page. Right there. No, there's probably, I know there's another one for them. Okay, you sign here and we're gonna need the last four numbers up through our address slices. Buyer one, let me make sure. We make sure that this...
Is the same thing about Louis?
Pardon me?
Is the same thing about Louis? One time it said Louis, I don't know.
No. No, that, that's, I think they've gotten rid of Louis again, I think they're over that. It wasn't last year.
I was gonna say, we had done it last year.
Okay. Yeah, signature buyer one. Just your name, first and last name.
Buyer two slash five, is he lucky? Not at your fault?
I'm sorry. Sixty-eight dollars.
So you can hear that to the after.
Also Stu Candace.
We'll tell the sheriff when you...
Cam was telling. When you twisted the camera to show him. His volume went down.
I suppose.
It seemed like...
Just Bill?
Just Bill.
Aren't you the lucky guy?
You could hear him well, and then when you turned the camera to him.
Maybe it's in a function of where the microphone was. We looked for auxiliary microphones over the weekend. We had no joy with that, but we just went to the best part. I think we can get something along with it in that, you know? Because obviously the elements, and we're in the night, he was right back here, and we're in the night. He said, see why I need more microphones?
It really, it was strange because Sid and Brad, you could hear Cam. Pretty well. And I didn't... And you could hear Brad better.
So maybe the microphones are...
So it's like, I think it's supposed to be someone on me.
Well, I thought so too.
But it seems like it did, except for the side, it's better than it was.
Hold on.
Good to know, good to know.
You're right.
Bill, I have an I T V downstairs. Volume cramming.
Well, I have to use my headphones.
I, I write it right now, it seems like if I could, yeah. I don't know who else could be in there, so I haven't for bed and I don't think I have to set up. Except for TBA, TBA can podcast.
Okay, well, I have both you and Kita here. I have been after a stop sign up here in Jefferson County for quite a while. Please find a way I can look at it and, what is the procedure we have to go through now to get to? I mean, do you have to write an ordinance for it?
Is it on a cattle road?
Yes.
The highway engineer has to look at it and, and make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, and then does it have to be signed by the sheriff too?
Uh, no, they confer with him usually to see if it's, you know, a good idea.
All right.
Yeah.
I will look at volumes and site distances to determine if there's...
All right, so you do that next meeting, are you good?
Yeah, what was the location?
Where you're at, nine fifty and Pirates Hurst Road.
On what road?
Pirates Bruce Road.
Is that wide or something?
That's wide or sound towards the beach. Yeah, Toby, right. It has a two-way stop and one way does not stop. And the one way that come...
Okay, I know where you are.
Yeah. You and I looked at it. The one way coming up the hill there, people up, you can't see people coming up until the last minute. So you're stopped and then you start up and then, oh, here comes somebody that doesn't have to stop. So I would, would really like to see us put a stop, a three-way stop there rather than just a two-way. Okay?
And this would be an ordinance limiting the Carroll County traffic code.
Okay.
And, you know, if I get an idea from, from the advance of the second meeting man here, I can have the ordinance ready for what you do at that time.
I would like...
So you want to expedite, want to expedite.
We're getting into the season where that's gonna be incredibly busy in our section here the past four months. Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board? Anybody wants to bring up? Yes, ma'am?
Aye.
Aye.
The treasurer's office has been inundated with phone calls and people coming into the office about a billing error on the conservancies. And I was hoping to maybe ask the auditor to explain that billing error and hoping that it could be mentioned in, by the comment to maybe ward off some of the phone calls that we're getting.
We know nothing about this, so...
The conservancies were not, didn't have their minimum bill of five dollars. And so they, it was something that didn't happen in here, so they, instead of paying twelve cents, you would be paying five dollars. You have to have a minimum bill. And they've all been out, sent out, most of them have been sent out. I wasn't here Friday, so I haven't been able to talk to my girls, because I was in an executive session at seven-thirty this morning. So I think they all have probably been sent out for your information.
The correction has been sent out or, oh?
Corrections have been sent out.
Corrections have been sent out, okay.
The original tax bills were mailed after less than five dollars rate. And now the corrective tax bills are being received. And there's, is there no explanation on the corrective tax bill? I don't, I... From what I've seen, there's no explanation on the corrective tax bill. And that's why we're getting the phone calls. And then people saying, you're mailing me a bill for, you know, twenty-eight cents or a dollar thirty-two and it costs more than that. And I'm trying to explain to them, you know, we, we have to bill it. Just from my understanding, it has to be billed, the money belongs, is rightfully owed to the conservancies, correct that? Yes. So we have no choice, even if it's eight cents, we have to send the bill out. So, that can be explained maybe in the comment, maybe that helps. There's not going to be eight cents or twelve cents, they're all gonna be five dollars, the minimum is five dollars. So if they were assessed at eight cents, whatever, they still have to pay the five dollars as a minimum bill on anybody, so. But if they already paid their tax bill, and they paid four dollars and fifty-two cents, then they're gonna get a tax bill for forty-four cents. The best, I don't know, because a lot of people, they get their original tax bill, they paid it, and it's done, and they're, think they're done from here.
They're gonna get a new one for the four dollars and fifty-two cents, not.
For the difference.
Yeah, it's not that other way around, so.
Well, whatever they, what, they're gonna get a bill for the balance of what they still owe, what they owe.
Correct. But it's not gonna be the forty-two cents or the twelve cents. The bill that goes out will be exactly what they owe, so if they came in and paid twelve cents, they're gonna pay.
They're gonna get a bill for four dollars and eighty-eight cents. If they paid four dollars and eighty-eight cents, they're gonna get a bill for twelve cents. So it depends on what they've paid.
Okay.
If they haven't paid, they're just gonna, they're gonna, if you could just put something in there, maybe that could ward off some phone calls that we're getting. Thank you.
Anything else to go before the board of commissioners? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being.